Yeah. Okay. You want to do the spot more.
And you're skimming the.
So that might.
Well, it's almost like.
All right. So this is public hearing. Thank you. Um. Public hearings order. Five public notice was published and the patient in the U.S. Federal. I would notice your by giving all residents specific violence. This party is a public hearing. Consider the annual appropriation orders this year beginning January first of twenty five. Standing December three, March twenty five. The mayor and the all people. And how the Illinois is our six forty five Tuesday, February twenty fifth. Twenty five. The hearing will be held in the land center. That's a chamber. Twenty five. On street. Twenty six. Six. Right. All quarter. What about?
Alan Farwell.
Here.
Oliver McGee. Oliver McCar.
Here.
Oliver Grohl. Oliver Johnson. Oliver Montoya. Oliver Rupert.
Here.
For president.
Okay. Um. Presentation can take it to the right of the meeting. We all are here, but the biggest highlight, I'm sure you guys have all seen, is the increase to water infrastructure. Um. Um. Including so many cities. Biggest increase to the operation difference from three this year. Outside of that's pretty similar to the same kind of. Um. As we've been doing over the years with the airports. That's where we're. So. The water infrastructure. With the other. So. The. 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 So. All right. This is public hearing. Public hearings order. Six forty five. Public notice was published and the patient in U.S. Federal. Public notice survived given while residents specifically violent. I think this party is a public hearing considering the annual appropriation orders this year beginning January first of twenty five. Standing December three, March twenty five. The help mayor and the all people. And how the Illinois is our six forty five Tuesday, February twenty fifth. Twenty five. The hearing will be held in the land center. That's a chamber. Twenty five. Mon Street. Twenty five. Six forty four. Six thirty. Right. Our order. What about?
Oliver Farwell.
Here.
Oliver McGee. Oliver McCar.
Here.
Oliver Grohl. Oliver Johnson. Oliver Montoya. Oliver Rupert.
Here.
For president.
Okay. Um. Presentation can take it to the right of the meeting. How we all are here, but the biggest highlight, I'm sure you guys have all seen, is the increase to water infrastructure. Um. Um. Including so many cities. This is the biggest. Increase to the operation difference from three this year. Outside of that, it's pretty similar to the same kind of. Um. Food as we've been doing over the years with the influence. That growing strategy. Of the same increase in water infrastructure with the. The. Two. So this is the. So. Not. I mean. For public hearing. The public council. And. So. The. All. These. 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 All. Oh. The Minister Tom Hogue can give updates. Now. All right. So, um. Last week, uh, everyone should have received the appropriation as part of the packet. Uh, this year because we had a few unique changes. Uh, there's a memo on the first page of it if you had a chance to review it, but I'm just going to go through it real quick just because it highlights a few. Um, of the, you know, more high. Move on on the notable parts of this particular appropriation. Um, so as we discussed in the past, this document is an appropriation, does function differently than a budget. Uh, the appropriation gives the city through its various departments the authority to spend the amounts listed, but it does not guarantee that any of these funds will be spent. And just by way of example, uh, we spent. We appropriated about twenty two million dollars in the general fund last year of just over twenty two and spent just over nineteen for about a three point two million dollar surplus in terms of revenue over expenses. Um, we would anticipate similar patterns, uh, in the general fund and the funds this year. General fund being, uh, the kind of most important fund in terms of the operations of the city. Everything, the funds underneath the general fund, golf, MFT, tip funds, those are all important. We do, we, we do want to keep those balances best we can, but those are also areas of money that go in for the projects, operations of the city. The day to day operations of the city are largely spoken via the general fund. So, um. Just. We set it in the every year, the four years we've been here, but just as a reminder to the public council large, the corporation does give the authority to spend. But as we have operated in our entirety of this administration, it does not mean the projects just start flying out the gate. Everything over twenty five thousand dollars, uh, does come back to this council. In fact, we often bring things under twenty five thousand dollars, um, to the council just, uh, whenever we have the, the, uh, goal to do so, we want to be as transparent as possible. Uh, and then just for the record, as we discussed previously, there were two very, there's two large potential projects baked into both the revenue and expenditure side of this appropriation. Uh, that would be kind of represent the biggest dollar change and numerical change in this appropriation compared to last year. And those two projects, as we discussed, would be, uh, six million dollars in forgivable loans that we're, uh, um, looking to for line replacement. And, uh, ten million, we're, we're looking at, uh, aiming at ten million dollars in, um, projected bonding revenue against water revenue. And that would be the first thing we need to take care of out of that absolutely have to, uh, is the repainting of both the inside and outside of, um, the tanks, which the EPA very much wants us to do, like yes. Um, so those two are appropriated for on the revenue side and expended in, and that's where you'll see some of these large bumps. Um, but it also is the biggest driver for why the revenues and expenditures see a significant increase from last year to this year. So. Um. As far as the bonding, which obviously there'd be more discussion at this council level before, as that process takes shape. Uh, we did, we have been in discussion, uh, with fifth or banks in regards to what the terms of the, of the bond might look like. Um, but we are in a good position here to bond. We actually have not taken any new bonds in the four years of this administration. We're about to make our last payment on our one existing bond. As far as debt for municipality goes, we are, we have very little. So we're in a very good position to, uh, we have, we, we, we would in, uh, household terms have an excellent credit. So, um. Who? Do you want to just touch on vehicles? One of our biggest expenditures every year is vehicles. We have aggressively tried to update our fleets. As you all remember, fleets at fire, public works and police were getting pretty bad. Um, we've made a lot of progress in updating these fleets, uh, but we want to continue down that road. And we're looking at the possibility of a new fire engine and the ambulance in the fire department and one new heavy truck, um, which we wait to pull for sometime, uh, in public works. Uh, where and when possible, we do financing options with these to limit the, to, to cushion the blow and stretch it out, uh, the blow and stretch it out, uh, from this fiscal year into the next, so that we're not, say, paying for entire nine hundred thousand on the fire trucking, right? You have the ability to break those up a little bit. Um, and then just one last thing I want to touch on because it's probably the largest revenue differential you'll see is there's a noticeable increase in ambulance. Okay, so just a quick little reminder, we all remember this, we switched to ALS service, uh, ambulance services last year. Uh, we anticipated we were going to bring in more revenue from those ALS calls. Uh, the biggest problem we ran into, uh, which was unanticipated at the time, was that we were the only fire department in the state of Illinois to move to ALS services in the middle of the year. Uh, that was something we hadn't anticipated. So the billing. Did not catch up as fast as we would like it, and as a result, we did lose some ambulance revenue that we, 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 we shouldn't capture this year. We know now what we didn't know before, um, but we, uh, do feel very comfortable that we have, uh, made the necessary adjustments here. Um, I personally think we're conservative on that line item, but, uh, but it, it is going to show a pretty, a pretty significant increase in revenue, but we have the evidence to back up. Our number of calls, what we were charging before and what we're going to be able to charge now. So. Um, that, I believe is all I, I had, I have, um, Lauren Fulbright from Casper Associates, who, um, really, a, a lot of the document that you're looking at was, uh. Instructed by myself, Lauren and Mark Potaska with the, uh, consultation of the individual department heads and deputy department heads where, where that's applicable. Um, so Lauren is here, if you have any. Counting level questions, I'm good at faking it, but if we get into, if we get into the hard numbers here, if you have any, um, additional questions, uh, we do still have some time on this, uh, on this public hearing, so if you want to take a little bit more time with it, if you have any direct questions for me or, and, uh, myself or the, 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 the person, type of answer.
Any questions right now? Okay, now, I'll give us the ready public comment. Now, to move to close the public hearing, motion to close. Oliver Nernill, Simon Montoya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say both. Well, seven, yeah, we'll start with the regular, see your bouncing meeting.
I'm only going to make the speaker.
Right, regular city council meeting, here in House of Chambers, today's already been done by, so, yeah.
Oliver Fairwell.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Oliver Carr, so here. Oliver Roll.
Here.
Oliver Johnson. Oliver Montoya.
Here.
Oliver Rupert. Six present, your honor.
Now, the presentation of their own proceedings, made a motion to approve City Council minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty five, is there a motion? Frank Ralph McGee, Samuel McParrow, any question? Do the roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Montoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
Public comments, as a reminder, the public comment period is not time for dialogue first, the public comment period is for the mayor and all members of the city to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one-way communication to the city council. City's administration and department heads are available for discussion tag. Turning public comments.
Good evening, Mayor, and also to our city council, Ali Clemente, representing Mission Covenant Church. I want to say thank you for yesterday's presentation for Black History Month and for all the honorees that were here. We really appreciate the support, and it's, it's wonderful to know that you're working together as a community with the government and also the people. So thank you so very much for bringing me.
Any other public comments? I will announce the business. The public hearing regarding the city of Blue Island's lead service line renewal and replacement plan, preliminary environmental impact determination, collision to the same, this is in regards to stuff that's going to be talked about in appropriation, maybe secretary legislature and so on. For the other side, one handed.
You don't think? I'm just giving a great synopsis. He already did it last Thursday. Snapshot. Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, as we discussed at the committee the whole last, uh, couple weeks ago, we have applied for, uh, funding from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, we have received preliminary approval, uh, for that funding, and as part of the process, um, we, uh, need to hold a public hearing, subject to the preliminary environmental impacts determination, which is listed, uh, environmental, uh, impacts of the proposed project from the public. We were approved for about five point nine million, and as we discussed, uh, some of that will be forgivable. Uh, last year, the amount was just over three million. That's those are the numbers that we look at. And then, obviously, remember, let, sort of finds to be able to replace would be subject to the, the cost of the lines, so the rent is being, um, fifteen to seventy thousand dollars per line.
Name, name is probably during the. Is there any questions? It was covered last meeting. When, there's, I'll, I'll, we're. Are there any public questions in the public hearing part of this? Thank you. When there's four, we have a motion to approve of payroll, dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty five, on four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy, is there a motion? Both of them, all, Samuel, and Bruton, verbal, any question? But please, you all know.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Montoya. Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
There is. We're being in a motion for approval of the house table, dated February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, on eight, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents, is there a motion? Oliver Roll, second, Oliver McGee, on question, Oliver Fairwell.
One quick question, something graphic, nice, and I, I, I don't think I've received before, so I was curious, and I'm not going to go into the gruesome details, but at page four of the, it's my presentation, uh, cleaning specialists and. Uh, fourteen hundred dollar expenditure and four of the services that they provided. Um, I'm not sure I've seen this.
We've done it, it's for removal of.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Bodies.
I just, I, I didn't know if it would be, you know, someone away for this, or who'd done this.
We just haven't had people be removed.
Oh, that's good news, okay.
Actually, actually, that's, four is pretty high, usually it's one or two, I'll.
Yeah.
Right, and, and the names of the seats are on there.
Yes, they are.
All right. Any other questions? Mark, please do the roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Montoya. Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
Motion varies. We don't receive, um, the S B A and this committee, the whole, I think this is, this is one hundred, one hundred and eighty.
It's not a shame, okay.
These are our motions for ordinance, the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, grant special use to allow property to harvest and property in industrial limited, industrial district, is the motion, Oliver McGee, the second. Oliver Roll, on question, Oliver McGee, um, and just, uh, I want to know, think of the fact that, uh, there. Well, your honor, I'm just, yes, it's, there was some, like, front right and side of what that was. If you picture it, it's not anything on that side, it's really, uh, something like. And the question is. First, please, you roll call, Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll. Oliver Montoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
Multi-areas. All right, we have the, the annual appropriation ordinance, the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, this year beginning January first, twenty twenty five, against the thirty first. Will be the motion second, and then again, any questions, uh, since the public hearing, I know, um, we will probably repeat the number that, since the motion. Oliver Fairwell, Samuel McGee, um, Tom, do you want to, while you help yourself?
So just for posterity for the record, uh, so you have, uh, an ordinance in front of you for the twenty twenty five, FY twenty twenty five appropriations, as we discussed in the, uh, public hearing, uh, we believe in spouse appropriations, uh, we believe it is, uh, a fiscally responsible outline for the pathway forward into twenty twenty five. It emphasizes as its major changes, uh, investment in, uh, public infrastructure, specifically water main lines and painting and treatment of our water tanks, and it, uh, factors in potential outside sources of revenue, including grant funding, uh, entry, uh, interest rate forgivable loans and bonding as potentially revenue sources for that. Uh, I think those are covers that we, so, if there are any additional questions, uh, I believe, uh, in a future meeting, we are going to have Oliver Roll, um, should, uh, model this, our, our, our finance data, uh, in a more, uh, similar fashion that we've done previously, which obviously allows for very easy, uh, accrual through the, through the process. Also, this year, we are very much looking forward to making a variation of that model public and front-facing on our new website, which we actually think will make Blue Island very on the vanguard of public transparency, uh, in terms of real-time funding at the city and such, so if there, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll make one comment, we've said this before, and I think it's worth repeating again, that, um, you know, the, within the revenue appropriation property, general property tax revenue is about three million, four hundred thousand dollars, and our total, our, our general fund revenue is twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars, so. We all, for our property owners, know that we're paying too much for property taxes, but, uh, Blue Island's share of that is pretty small, uh, lies about, you know, thirteen percent of our budget, of our general fund budget, asset fund budget, comes from property taxes, and then individuals, the property, as we have to see that Blue Island's line has, it's not that running, so. Not saying properties aren't too high, but, you know, we're not the main focus, no?
I think, or I think we had a newsletter, we should probably read it again, show for the average, right now.
Yeah, so about sixty, sixty, sixty cents on the dollar of property tax dollar goes to the usual district. And then everything, the other forty percent then goes to very, the very governments, which includes municipalities, uh, park districts, library districts, et cetera, so. Um, and then within that, now, I, I, I go back to the graphic, within that, um, I want to say again roughly, I think roughly sixty cents on, on that dollar that goes to the city goes to, directly to your, your purchase, so, and the numbers bear out when you look at the general fund there, because I got, uh, this is Oliver Rupert's first year here, so I was talking to him earlier today, and I said, but we've been through this before. The general fund is the operations of the city, right? So that's the fund that I spend most time, Mark and Lauren spend the most time, making sure that our revenues are accurate and that our expenditures are, are as accurate as we can project them to what it's going to be in the year, because other things like MFT, TIP funds, we'll make those decisions to use those for projects based on the money that we have, right? Um, for instance, I talked to Oliver Johnson, I know he's scheduled to be here later tonight, um, about his interest in getting the splash pad either repaired or replaced. So we have some money for potential repair of the splash pad in the rec center budget, but then this rec center is also a tip, so if we feel like we have to go into those TIP funds, permanent infrastructure project like a new splash pad at a rec center is exactly what TIP funds are supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be doing things that improve the, the community and economy of, uh, of the area, so, um, but the general fund is the day-to-day operation of the city.
Thank you. Nothing else, uh, do you need the roll call? Do you want?
Oliver Fairwell. Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Montoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
There is, under Eve, a resolution of the city of Blue Island to, uh, sell or dispose of city-owned property in twenty-one thirty-three hundred and thirty-sixth Street, and obviously, like we've done before, create those business, so it also, all the channels here, and post city, so, so the opposite, we do this, right? Is there a motion? Oliver McGee, Samuel, Fairwell, on question? First, please, the roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Montoya. Oliver Rupert.
Aye.
Goodnight, your honor.
There is. Next one, uh, around the second session in previous meetings, motion to approve the lease of planes in case twenty twenty-three L zero one one three four zero. Motion? Move the works, I call the media, question? First, please, the roll call.
Oliver Fairwell. Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Carr.
Hi.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Luther.
Hi.
Oh.
Here is. Under G, the resolution, city of Blue Island, county Illinois, on raise approval proposal with ground town communications. Is there a motion? Roll, second, well, Matoya on the question. All the G.
Uh, well, I just, I, 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 I wanna thank, uh, the grounds for all their commitment to the city of Blue Island. Um, we really appreciate it and, um, I, I, uh, also, um, overworked in this, although I just, I, I already said this is low, and I appreciate that. Uh, I just kind of want to see if we, there is. Different because, um, I, I do believe it probably is, but it's not, you know, so, um, but, um, but that said, um, looking forward to, offer us, uh, website, being that people to present some financial support basis. It's such a, so. Thank you very much.
Any questions? First, please do roll call.
Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Carr.
Hi.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Luther.
Hi.
Besides your honor.
Here is. And as we mentioned earlier, a payment for waterworks on two thousand six, uh, real estate tax, here is for levy, tax levy year twenty four, paid debt service, payment of ninety eight thousand fifty dollars to the waterworks, series funding fund. Turn around you service, series two thousand six, the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, is there a motion? All the power, second, well, all on the question. But with the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Carr.
Hi.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Luther.
Hi.
Besides your honor.
Here is, the mayor's comments, uh, just reminding everyone, it's all pretty locked in, and our city work, um, likes to work on this. Uh, so there again, April twenty eighth, plus one of us loses for a candidate. Should, I hope that's. Nobody file, try to make it short. I'll leave anything, um, April twenty eighth, uh, five P M. And thanks to everybody ahead of time, I would like a hundred percent attendance, so please, and, 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 uh, so, we, on a set of city hall, like traditions, they table the years. It's April twenty eighth, five P M, on the city hall. Um, and then I sent everybody an email, it just came through before the meeting, and very rarely I send, uh, or they ask for participation, but this does affect us in a great sense. Every year I've been here, uh, the Illinois municipal league has lobbied along with representative Blueville, who's the chairman, I think they changed names, called cities and towns committees, municipal services. Um, as a former mayor, who represents that committee, so part of your income tax, it gets redistributed to towns based on population. And it used to be for decades, decades and decades, ten percent, redistributed to all the towns on a, on a per capita basis. It was lowered about fifteen, twenty years ago to, about four or five percent and then, uh, Representative Blue has been able to, with other help points, they represented, including our local, about ready to raise it a few more percentage points. We wanna be building on that. So, this bill, which is gaining traction, is, is, is the second reading, I sign on as witness for the last one, it's past that level, it's filed to another one. And I'd like all our holdings, also sign in, doesn't mean you're below again, doesn't mean there's ten, just when they read the roll call, who's in favor, who's against, they'll read every name that put their, their name in as support in this, every elected official. So, we can check that email, it's really easy, it's really easy form, actually now that I've done a bunch on auto pot, so, the future ones, really easy. Um, they just sign on as a proponent, and you say you want the, this is as a witness, the, uh, roll call, introduce more support and also hopefully get some funds, and this has to be used for infrastructure. And it's a good one, on these things like the, the, as we mentioned, all the water and these regulations. So, please, if you can't get a chancellor today, I'll read their poems, tomorrow, add your names to the list, any elected official. I send to, it's, uh, which is seen with, uh. That's all, mayor's comments.
Um, ladies and thank everybody from our Black History Celebration yesterday, uh, all our city departments, the Blue Island Park District, Iversons, and Pacasins for all their help and Melissa's success. Uh, March third is popping the cap, and, and please support first, please promote hometown hero registration. Our goal is to get enough banners, like over the bridge this year, so we can get to the middle of the vision, so. Everybody going hometown heroes. All of you.
Thank you. You got any answers? Do you turn, you got, you got exactly, we have next second. Hope this is good. Uh, city administration?
Uh, just wanna point out real quick, cut to things, all county related. Um, one, everyone in here, uh, should be getting an email sometime in March from fire statement of interest, just a reminder, make sure you fill that out, make sure you get it in on time, otherwise I get nasty emails. Uh, and speaking of, uh, Cook County, I did just wanna point out, uh, we have a couple of representatives from Cook County with us today, uh, Kyle Seltzer Johnson, who has been working with us, and I'm sorry, no, I, you wanna come up and say something?
No, I'm Katie Prager with our G, I'm helping with the funding.
That's okay, sorry, Gina, but I probably did, my memory's getting shot. Um, anyway, uh, we've been working with, uh, Build Up Cook on a number of projects. Uh, they are, uh, one of the main engines behind the lead line, uh, service long we talked about, but then really in addition to that, I just wanted to point out, Build Up Cook, uh, we've been in discussions with them, really going back to last year. They are going to be covering the cost of a new roof over our heads right now. And the fanics, which if you just go ahead and count the water stains, you'll see when that's necessary, um.
One person has gotta be watching.
Yeah, and, uh, they're also going to be, um, paying for it, helping us to cover all the costs of a chlorine pump for one of the major components of our water system. So, these are major infrastructure investments, and while we have had at times stop and go relationships with other parts of our intergovernmental relationships, Cook County, uh, under President Kirk Winkle, and with this current representation and the, and the folks they have, um, working with us on the ground, have been really, really strong supporters of Blue Island, so I just wanted to make a note of that upfront.
Thank you. All the manic nonsense reports are comments. Now, if you have an executive, so we can vote for the board executive. All the G almost said, all the roll, I'd prefer to say, I, I, I.
Well, not here that we were having.
We were, and actually we wouldn't.
At the time, here.
I thought that I was tired of those. Plus, Mark, unmarked.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna put on my dining room table. Here I am. Call this meal.
You should start bathing. Yeah, in my car.
There you go.
Very.
Yeah. That's not my car, right? Just, just wear it, right?
Wait, how this will be my Halloween costume. There we go. It's scary.
All right. We need a motion for adjournment to resume regular session. motion by Al, second one, return well, exactly we talked about to eliminate the game. Is there a motion to adjourn? Al, Colonel, pick your own role, all in favor.
Aye.
The opposed?